Okay.
Go ahead, make me close to get excited myself off it looks like.
Is John there with you Sean or are we still missing him?
Um, he won't be making today's meeting. So he, uh, he won't be here with us.
We know anything about Marla?
Uh, pardon me?
Yes, uh, Maura had something come up and she wasn't able to make it as well.
Okay.
You guys are currently streaming and you can start the recording whenever.
All right, thank you.
Can you do that?
All right, we'll get going here. Let's see, being that it's, uh, two oh two, we'll, um, start the regular meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Would, uh, Mr. Wellness, would you call rule?
Yeah, um. Commissioner Hinckley?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Hanning? Commissioner Spiegelberg? Commissioner Moore? Very many parts, sorry.
You're fine here. All right, uh, begins that we have two members that are at today's meeting, let's go ahead and excuse absent, uh, all entertain a motion to excuse absent member, um, Commissioner Spiegelberg and Commissioner, um, Haunning from the Planning and Zoning Commission from this meeting.
So moved.
Was that a second, Mr. Hinckley?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Looks like we have a motion to excuse them in a second, so we'll go ahead and take a vote here, Mr. Hinckley.
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, I, emotion carries. Mr. Spiegelberg and Ms. Haunning is, have been excused from today's meeting. We do have three members here, so we have enough for a quorum, so we'll get going, there's not too much on our plate today, but we'll keep going here, um, approval of the agenda, are there any deletions, uh, to the agenda for last month's meeting? Um, excuse me, excuse me, approval or agenda, I was looking at the minutes, excuse me. Are there additions or deletions for the agenda for the, um, Wednesday, December eighth, twenty twenty one meeting?
Yes, uh, I, I'd like to just add, under current planning projects, there, there are two or three others that just a short update, I think would be appropriate to, so if we could have just a, an other on there, that would give us a home for those.
Let's see, so under current planning projects, Mr. Hinckley, you want to add, uh, an item number seven? Um, and what's that in reference to?
Well, uh, I'm interested in just hearing an update on, uh, several things, the natural resource management plan that's ongoing, the cap update that's ongoing, uh, the joint growth plan, I mean, those are all things, I think, that are current planning projects that, that we ought to just be kind of generally keeping tabs on. Um, and then on item five, it says planning and subdivision regulations, but the example of staff report that was provided was, was for zoning, so again, I'm just, uh, thinking we're covering a little more character into that current planning projects than are specifically listed here. So if we wanted to add a item seven other, it would give us a home for those.
Okay, and then, um, were you going to update us on that, Mr. Hinckley?
I was looking to Mr. Gerch to provide that information.
We can, we can give you an update, that's not a problem at all, so. I was actually thought about doing that, I just, we just didn't get it on the agenda, so.
Okay, very good, so we'll decide add that as an item seven, those updates that Mr. Gerch is going to present here for us, um, under current planning, uh, projects, does that sound okay to everybody, Mr. Kennedy?
With that addition to the agenda, I would move to approve the agenda.
Okay, very good, thank you, good second? Mr. Pinkley, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hinckley. We'll go ahead and, um, take a vote on that, Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Chairman Moore, myself, I, motion carries to amend the agenda for today's meeting. Item number four, approval of minutes, are there any corrections to the minutes for last month's meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Hinckley.
Yeah, uh, I appreciate the thoroughness of the minutes, the, the, the one thing as I was reading through it that I thought was uh, an important thing that Commissioner Hanning brought up that wasn't reflected in the minutes was her concern about the cumulative impacts of wind projects. Uh, it wasn't specifically relevant to our discussion of the one before us, but, but I thought it might be useful to lay that marker down, because I think she responsibly did, so to the extent these minutes serve as, as guides to, to future use and where things were brought up, I, I would like to see that added, uh, if you want specific language, it would just be in that, what, fifth sentence from the end of that section to, to add and cumulative impacts of wind projects, I, I just thought it was an important point and it was worthy of reflecting in the minutes.
All right, thanks, Mr. Hinckley, Mr. Kennedy, did you see any i- issues or i- items on the minutes from last month's meeting you'd like to be amended or edited?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Wellness, would you, uh, add those to, um, Mr. Hinckley's suggestion to our, uh, minutes for the official record?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, um, the, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes amended for last month's meeting. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy, take a vote, Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, uh, myself, I, my motion carries with minutes amended that we received for last month. Disclosures, the chair calls for any disclosures to be known for today's meeting. Not seeing any public applications, I think that there probably really isn't any disclosures from the three of us. With that being said, uh, the discussion today will be conducted in accordance with the state statutes, the rules of the planning and zoning commission and other applicable laws. It doesn't look like we have any public applications, but we will have a, a period for citizen comments, so uh, anyone who addresses the, uh, commission, uh, please, um, raise your hand, um, on the participant screen and I'll call on you, please state your name and your address for the records. Um, with that being said, we'll move on, there's no public applications at this meeting, so we'll move on to current planning projects. Item number five on our agenda today is plating and subdivision regulation updates overview, Mr. Gerch?
Yeah, thank you, um, so as you recall from, uh, previous meetings, on the board of county commissioners would like to, um, split the process for preliminary plat and a final plat, um, when it's more than a small subdivision. Um, so I, I've worked with, uh, Matt Ayers on this, um, actually, he's done most of the work, so I'll give all the kudos to him and what we're, we've been accomplishing so far, which you haven't seen yet. Um, we're still in the process of, of creating this draft, but what has been done so far is, um, we did address that. Um, Mr. Ayers went through and, um, compared our regulations to those of state statute, and there were a number of changes that needed to be updated or made so that we can update ours to um, be consistent with state statutes, so he went through and did all of that. Also, a lot of the discussions and things that we've had in the past, um, we, uh, I had a document that I sent over to him and he incorporated much of that as well. Um, so, we're going to look at a pretty good update once we get to that point and are able to bring that to you. Um, one of the things we're still working on right now is, um, some of the engineering, we've done some of the engineering work um, for the street standards, um, and as well as there's been, um, some work on the drainers report standards that we have, um, but we've sent that over to the county, the new county attorney, um, or not county attorney, excuse me, county engineer, um, who will be looking at those and, um, providing us some, some information, it sounds like he, he's going to need a month or so to, to really dig into that and, uh, get us some good, um, good language and, and good recommendations. So, so he's in the process of doing that, um, just to kind of give you a brief update of what has been done, is there's been some reorganization of the document. Um, those of us that are familiar with it, we, you can see that there's, there's some duplicate language throughout the, the document, um, exact language in one chapter that is also in another chapter. Um, specifically the plating, some of the plating information, an amended plats and some of that stuff, it kind of shows up in two different spots. Um, so with that and some of the other areas, we've done some reorganization just to make it uh, more readable, hopefully, and understandable of where things are kind of put together. Um, the other thing is, is the removal of the small subdivision process and replacing it with two different processes, a, a parcel division regulation process, um, and then the minor subdivision regulation, so so these were, what, the statutes allow us to, um, exempt from the majority of the minimum standards in the state um, statutes, anything that's five lots or less, currently, we only use, um, that provision for three lots or less. Um, I know Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Moore have seen, um, the, the proposal that, that's placed in here, um, and reviewed that, um, previously. But we'll, we've put that in there, it basically, the parcel division regulations would, would occur for a lot split, which we get a lot of, and sometimes there's not a whole lot of review that needs to be done. Um, but, and then the minor subdivision regulations would be for anything that's five lots or less. Um, both standards or both of the, those regulations would still require a review of, of how wastewater will impact the area. Um, obviously, that's probably your, your biggest concern for a smaller subdivision and that with, as well as like roads and some of those types of things, I mean, those are your big, big concerns there. Um, so those will, um, be in there and you can review that once we get this all together. Um, and then I already noted that the update to the road design standards and drainage standards is occurring. Um, right now, we don't have kind of a finalized, anything to put in there yet, because we're waiting for the, our new county engineer to review that and provide his comments. Um, so with that, we just wanted to give you an update of where that's at. Um, hopefully, within the next, um, month or so, we're going to be able to wrap this thing up and, and bring it to you. Um, we know that you guys will have, um, have some comments and, and we can go through this, um, and take the time that we need to, to review it and, and come up with a, a good document that we can hopefully get through the process and, uh, get us up to, up to snuff with, uh, the, this state regulations, um, as well as just, you know, consider some of these other changes that we've, we've talked about and uh, we'd like to make to, uh, make, make our subdivision process a little bit easier and more understandable and clearer. Um, so, I, I don't know if anybody has any comments, we just wanted to update John this, but, um, be happy to fill in the questions at this point. And Matt, um, if you would like to add anything, Matt, um, you can definitely do that, like I said, he's, he's taken all of, of the brunt of this, I think he spent a couple of weeks going through the whole thing and comparing the state statute, so much more ambitious than I have been, so.
Uh, yeah, um, thanks, David, I do have just a, a couple logistical notes, um. Currently, I'm pretty slammed with, uh, response briefs for appeals of commissioners' decisions. Um, so that may push out my ability to, um, get these, uh, finalized until maybe February or so. Um, and then secondly, these are, a lot of these changes are just reflective of statute, so once we provide something, um, to this commission, uh, the commissioners will be able to go through and, um, make recommendations and, uh, changes as they see fit as well.
Perfect, thanks, Matt, um, yeah, I, I think your timing will probably correspond with what the county engineers' time is, so I don't think it's gonna, you know, push us back anymore than we need to go, so, but good luck with all that.
Thank you, David, um, I'll go around the commission and ask if you guys have any questions, Mr. Hinckley? You have any questions on any of that from Mr. Gerch?
Uh, well, just me and a couple of comments, and, and as, as David put in his, his preliminary, uh, piece, uh, he, he and Joe and Jennifer and Matt were, were kind enough to, to sit down on a little work session uh, with, with me, uh, about two weeks ago, so just to bring there some, you, you, you and and Mr. Kennedy into the discussion, uh, we also looked at things like, uh, the preliminary plat regulations as they stand include the DEQ requirement, and so, uh, there are some, some other issues that I understood that you guys were going to work through in terms of what is required at which stage and, and then you wandered off into these timing things that I hope you could work out for us, but, but just to be aware that that there are some other, uh, cleanup that we hope will, will just make it clear to everybody what has to happen when. Um, and then the other thought that I had thrown out was perhaps we want to separate the, the zoning decisions from those preliminary and final plats, and I think several times we've run into the case where something comes to us almost as a, a zoning preliminary and final all in one package, and, and there might be some value in in separating those zoning decisions out in that they're of a different, they're kind of a different beast, so we will, we'll get a shot at all of that, uh, but just, uh, for you guys benefit, there other aspects of those planning and zoning regulations that are in their discussion, and, and then just to commend these guys for for that tedious job, it's like my kitchen table, there's nothing on it, and then there's more, and then there's more, and then there's more, and pretty soon you can hardly find a place to sit down, so periodically, we need to go through and just clean everything out and, and, and erase the etch a sketch, so I'm glad that they're taking that on, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley, Mr. Kennedy?
The only question or ask that I would have would probably be of Matthew and that, and I don't want to add more to your workload, but I was wondering if it'd be possible for you to, I don't know whether footnote is the right word, but to reference back where there's changes due to statutory or, or regulation changes at the state level, if, if you could note those, and it might be useful to have those around, so as the legislature changes things, we also know when we need to, uh, go back through again and, and make changes as well. That'd be my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and, uh, no comments from me.
Um, one, one more thought, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Hinckley.
Yeah, the, maybe it bogs in item six, but the other piece that, that has been discussed is doing a similar, uh, a review of the zoning regulations and, and various suggestions have been made over the recent months of how those need to be changed, so uh, do we want to talk about that here, or is that under your staff report? Because am I right, David and Matt, we are also doing the same thing with the zoning regulations as well as the plating and subdivision regulations?
Um, that's not something that I, that we, I haven't, um, dug into at this point, but I know that, um, Jennifer and Matt have been kind of taking notes on a lot of this stuff, and I, I think that that will come later. Um, but I don't know, Matt, if you want to answer that?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, uh, Hinckley, that is, it's on our, um, longer term list, certainly. Uh, but that will be quite an endeavor.
Okay, I guess, I had thought that one was, was first on the list because of the issues with comprehensive plans, um. What, what am I missing there, I, I had thought that was, was, I think say top priority was to, to bring our, our, uh, zoning regulations into conformity with the recent changes in state law, what, what, what am I missing?
Okay, um, well, in reference to that, yeah, those would be relatively minor revisions, I, um, thought that you were addressing more a comprehensive, um, overview, such as what we're doing with the subdivision regulations.
So, so we will be seeing those, those minor tweaks on the zoning regulation soon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get moving on here, um, move on to item number six, staff report, update discussion. David, what'd you have intel for that?
All right, so, um, what I've provided to you was a draft of, well, um, mostly the county attorney's offices kind of went through, they took one of our staff reports and, um, reorganized it a bit, um, and kind of addressed some of the concerns that have came up, um, in the past, um, with how these things are organized and findings of fact, conclusions of law, um, your recommendation, um, what the board will need to recommend. So we're just giving you a copy of what we've kind of worked through, um, we did meet with Mr. Hinckley, um, who also provided some feedback which I will say hasn't been incorporated into what you received, I just sent you what just because of the turnaround time, I wasn't able to get some of those other things, I can't remember what they were that we discussed, there's a couple of things that we wanted to change with that word, yeah, there was some wording, wording things in here that we wanted to change, but we'll get those, so this is kind of the template for, I mean, this one, I believe, is a zoning change. We'll kind of use this template, um, with a conditional use, which is very similar to this type of staff report and application. And then it'll also be applied to the subdivision standards, the subdivision standards are a bit different, but, I mean, the process and findings and, and those things will be very similar. Um, so, so you'll, you'll start seeing a little bit of a change in the staff report you, you receive. Um, a little bit of the wording for your approvals has been changed as well. Um, so, we just want to get, also get this in front of you so that you, um, can kind of look at that and um, if you have any comments on it, we'd be, be happy to hear those or questions, um. And, I mean, where Mr. Hinckley was there with us, I mean, we, we definitely, if he, if he wants to pipe up and kind of um, give his perspective on this as well, I'm going to appreciate that, so, um, that's all I have, so.
All right, thank you, David, Mr. Hinckley, do you have anything to add?
Well, yeah, yeah, and I hope maybe we can have a little bit of discussion of this, uh, what I did with the example that, that was sent to us with the packet was then I went back and looked at the uh, original staff report on this, uh, Chester zoning change, just kind of a, see, see what it, what it changed. And, and I'd have to say, as a planning and zoning commissioner, I appreciated the discussion of the comprehensive plan that was given to us in the previous version, and I understand that there are a range of opinions on, what about the comprehensive plan? Uh, so, without getting into the legalities of it, and, and I would like maybe invite comments from my colleagues here. Speaking personally, I am looking at the comprehensive plan to help decide how to approach these zoning things. Um, and, and that action is, is explicitly authorized under Wyoming statute nine eight three oh one, which it says local planning, gotten, local plans may guide local governments in amending local zoning regulations, which is what we're doing here. Uh, for example, I, my objection to what we ended up doing with Chester was that it, it looked like spot zoning to me, kind of out in the middle of all that agricultural, suddenly here's this authorization to proceed with the with what could be an eight lot subdivision, and, and on the flip side, when we were looking at, at Ms. Powell's, uh, zoning request, I was, was guided by the fact that the comprehensive plan had identified Harmony as a PGA three where it was appropriate to, uh, to, to, to do a little bit more development, I mean, that, that's what the planning, the the comprehensive plan is for, so with specific reference to the staff report, I hate to lose that and again, I know Matt and Jennifer don't, it's, are we not allowed to say the words comprehensive plan, we're not allowed to think about them, I, I think they can't help but be highly relevant as we move forward, and I, as a single commissioner, appreciate David and Joe uh, taking us through how the comprehensive plan applies to these decisions as they come before us. So, where, where are we on that? And, and can we not talk about the comprehensive plan in our staff reports?
Commissioner Moore?
Go ahead, Ayers.
Um, Commissioner Hinckley, uh, the recent change in state statute explicitly uh, provides that the comprehensive plan is not to be used as a basis for denial in any land use decision. Um, because of that, so. Speaking, oh, uh, because of that, we, um, should not make references to the comprehensive plan, uh, for any sort of decision-making uh, basis. Um, the comprehensive plan is meant to be a plan that you then translate into zoning. We can certainly implement provisions from the comprehensive plan into our zoning resolution or subdivision permit resolution, but the comprehensive plan alone is not, um, law.
I understand, but what, what, you, you've, a standard legal approach is, I understand, I don't mean to play lawyer here, but I guess I am, is that you try to give meaning to all the words in the statute. What meaning do you suggest we take from the words of the statute? Local land use plans may guide local governments in adopting or amending local zoning regulations, but isn't that precisely what we are doing here? What, what do those words mean?
That means that the plan guides your adoption and amendment of the resolution itself. Not then applications of the resolution to specific instances.
But isn't a change of zoning a change to the zoning regulation and amendment to the zoning regulation? I don't, I guess that's, and, and we had this discussion the other day, but I'm still being thick-headed. How could, how could changing the zoning designation of a piece of ground not be a amendment to the zoning of that piece of ground? What, what other, what else could it be, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Do I get a butt at the apple here? Changing the zoning of a parcel doesn't affect the zoning regu- zoning regulation. And, and that's the entire point, you can certainly use it to inform how you change the zoning regulation itself, but when we rezone a parcel, it is not changing the zoning regulation, it is merely changing the zoning of a particular parcel. And I see Jennifer's got a hand up.
Thanks, I am just stepping into the end of this, I just stepped back in the office, I was out at my son's doctor's appointment. Um, but just to follow up on what Commissioner Kennedy was saying and what Matt also said when I was listening on YouTube before I got here, um, is that we took out the references to the comprehensive plan because denials cannot be made based on a comprehensive plan. And that has been a continuous issue that has come up over and over, both in this commission as well as at the county commissioners. And it poses problems for us as we are responding to appeals. So, the discussion about the comprehensive plan can happen and how it fits into the plan, however, no basis for a denial can be rooted in the comprehensive plan. And so to get around that, from our perspective in a legal office, the easiest way to ensure that the comprehensive plan is not brought into any portion of a denial is to remove it from consideration within the reports. You can certainly have the discussion about how it fits, but anything that is denial has to be based on what is in the zoning resolution currently.
So to get back to the staff So to get back to the staff report, which is the the bit that we're discussing now, it would be appropriate, because I think it would be useful for our staff to walk us through the comprehensive plan and how it bears on this. But then what I'm hearing our instructions from council to be is that when you then get to the end, if you are inclined to deny the zoning change request, you need to to found your denial in other other documents. Is that, is that, is that?
In the zoning resolution, yours, you're didn't, that's the problem that we've been struggling with is that separation between a discussion of comprehensive plan and how the comprehensive plan was used to generate the existing zoning regulations. And the desire to use the comprehensive plan to deny something, even though that denial is not anticipated within the zoning regulations.
So, so, so the play with my example of of Tammy Powell, if the if we were to approve it and the neighbors of, well, right, or say Chester, if they said, oh, this is I'm gonna try to cast this right. My interest in approving it was because it was in PGA three consistent with the comprehensive plan. So this is where, is this symmetrical? I can't use that as a reason to approve it either?
You can use that as consideration for your approval, yes. There's nothing that limits it as being considered. But so the transition from your reliance on that in the section of the comprehensive plan translates directly to the resolution where it talks about whether it's compatible with neighboring properties. All of those requirements are incorporated within the resolution itself.
So, so if I wanted to look at PGA three, could I somehow bring that into the regulation? I I thought it was a valid concept of a.
If we go through the rule change process, anything can be brought into the regulation. It cannot be brought in on an individual basis until the rule change process has been followed. And those corp- those portions of the comprehensive plan are then become part of the zoning resolution. At that point, you can rely on whatever is in the zoning resolution.
And I think that was with your information, which, Mr. Chairman, I I I think that's kind of where some of these previous discussions have gone. I'm thinking specifically of Commissioner Henning saying, let's not purge the comprehensive plan from our zoning regulations until we see what the what the replacement is. And so I guess what I hear you saying, Jennifer, is is that invitation is is one that we should we should carefully consider and 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 I'm, and and since we've had these discussions, I've been struggling with. How would we bring something from the comprehensive plan into the zoning regulation? I haven't come up with a good example yet, but but.
Rule change, the same way we are going to present the amended plating and subdivision resolution to you. That is exactly how you would incorporate different things into a zoning resolution. You propose language, you redline it, it goes to this commission, goes out for public comment. It goes to the commissioners and it goes out for public comments. And then at some point, some version of that is adopted and passed, or it's not.
No, I I, and my question wasn't procedurally, I understand that, but conceptually, say I want to bring in the concept of a of a priority growth area three. Uh, again, conceptually, I understand it has to go through all the processes and I appreciate the distinction between an individual request and a global, but can what, how might one do that globally within the regulation through all the appropriate notice? Can it say something like, um, we want zoning changes to be reviewed with respect to planning growth area three?
No, no, you would have to incorporate the entirety of the definition of planning growth areas within the zoning resolution. You cannot have any reference back to the comprehensive plan on which you would base a denial.
Okay, no, I'm I'm trying to follow those directions, so I I this change in the zoning regulations would would define something called parity growth area three, or whatever you wanted to call it in in clear terms within the zoning regulation. And then it would say, we would like a zoning change exposed to that concept. Is that, is that kind of where this would have to go?
Uh, Jennifer, if I may.
Yes, please, there.
Um, Commissioner Hinkley, the Wyoming State Supreme Court described the process as grafting. You take the provisions from the text of the conference plan that you want, and then you graft them over into the zoning resolution. So, yes, you could set up zones in the county that correspond directly to the priority growth areas. Um, and it would then incorporate the provisions and requirements um, from the comprehensive plan for those areas.
No, that that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, Matt. So so additional.
To make certain that every bit that you're grafting in, none of it requires you to refer back to the comprehensive plan to get a definition or anything in there.
Okay, because because I think that's the the challenge that you have issued to us as as interested citizens, as well as planning zone commissioners, is how to craft that language to bring forward as a proposal to change the zoning regulation.
And I think that's something that if there, especially if there are things that you, big changes you want to incorporate into the zoning resolution, that is a discussion that you should be having hand in hand with the planning office. Because they are the professionals who the county relies on to give their information and they can talk through with you how to make that work and if it works and if it doesn't work. And all of the pieces that will have to be incorporated to make it work.
Absolutely, and great advice, and that's exactly then what what should happen. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to go out and and cowboy this and start changing regulations casually. They should be carefully coordinated. But I I think there is considerable interest and and it's, it's just to be respectful of all the hard work that was done in the comprehensive plan. Otherwise, that just becomes a a kind of a la 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 document that sits over there that has no bearing on anything. And I I would like to give it meaning. And the way to do that, what I'm hearing is to, in consultation with planning and zoning commission members as well as the staff and and with you guys to start crafting such language. I I would like us to move forward doing that.
The other piece of the connection you're missing is that the zoning resolutions as they exist are, were in part and have been amended in part to comply with the pieces of comprehensive plan that prior members of this commission, prior members of the county commissioners felt were necessary for regulation to be incorporated as regulation. And always that can change. It's a fluid, the zoning resolution itself is a fluid document. And it can change so long as it goes through that rulemaking process. But also, the plan is a plan, and so incorporating the entirety of it is likely not in the best interests of anyone as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Discussion to be continued. I I am taking some useful direction from this tonight, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Mr. Kennedy?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and and uh, no common questions for myself. Move on to, uh, okay, Mr. Hinkley?
Well, yeah, again, since they went through and gave us an example here, may I, may I suggest one more after I turn this stupid phone off? So down here on staff analysis of page three of four. And and again, I I realize I've looked at this, it's more care than the other commissions have had more time. This is really where we resolved the findings concerns that I had. Where it says the applicant, so this is an affirmative judgment of planning office, which we are invited to endorse as the commission. The applicant has adequately addressed potential impacts this zoning change may cause and has provided a complete application survey. Uh, then it goes on to say the property is currently zoned agriculture and is compatible with existing land use. That that then addressed item A of that A through I list. So my question is, what what's the thinking there? Does this item A merit special calling out, or would you want to do that with each of items A through H? Again, I'm I'm just trying to to make this.
I will tell you, the language that's in there for the staff analysis and applicant response and all of those things, don't rely on that at all. I hacked it up when I was changing the format. So David and his office will add the information in there as they see necessary. If there are any areas where it is incompatible, they will certainly point those out, I believe. Initially, it was just as a refresher that it's currently zoned ag and they're asking for a change to something else. And and they did reference in that case, at least to some extent, the compatibility with surrounding properties. But don't take the language that is in this document to be what you will see every time when it comes to applicant response, the staff analysis, those things will change based on the application in front of you at the direction and authoring of the planning office.
So, so the the fact that in this case, that compatibility with existing land use was was called out. Uh, one might approach all the others the same way if it fit the particular situation. Is that what you're saying?
I I'm saying it doesn't have to be called out. In this, it, this sample that I cobbled together, it was coughed out, but I don't think you should have any expectation that it always will be. I think, and David and Joe feel free to chime in, my thought it is generally that the staff analysis is where they point out any issues that they see with regard to the information that the applicant has provided to address the zoning resolution.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, David.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, just to go, go on with what, um, Jennifer said, um, yeah, our staff analysis, that would be where, like, if there is something that we feel like you guys should consider in your decision um, from the the list above, um, specifically the impacts, then that's where we would call it out and probably provide you some information and um, some thoughts that we have about it. Um, like, for instance, you know, the the compatibility issue, we brought that up. Um, that's something we would want you to to think about it with your decision. Um, or if there's, you know, some other other issue on the property. Um, you know, may maybe this is a property with a lock for protection overlay zone, you know, under the natural environmental resource, um, information in our staff analysis, we would point that out. It's like, well, this is in lock for protection overlay zone, you know, just so you know. You may want to consider that in your decision or, um, so that that would be the idea. And then the the things that we didn't touch on, then those will be the ones we don't, we thought were fine. There's nothing to add to. Um, but yeah, that would be my idea of how this kind of plays out um, in the report from our perspectives.
I I, that's, that's a great answer. On its face, the first sentence is the whole show. Uh, you have basically invited us to accept as findings what the applicant said. But but all right, now that's a good answer. There are certain of those that that maybe you feel merit additional discussion, as you just said. I think that's, that's a great approach. So, yeah, thank you. And then the real road test of this would be, uh, one where either you disagreed with the applicant or the commission disagreed with you. And and I appreciate that on that next page, then, uh, you've lined out what such a motion would look like to put everybody on notice that that simply denial unadorned is probably not acceptable. Uh, one additional, just to comment theirs, we're going forward under on page four, item two. Uh, the the way you've written that, and I understand, Jennifer, this is just a draft, but it's a draft intended to list the comments, so I'm giving you one. Uh, it suggests that recommend denial uh, based on the applicant's failure to adequately address the impact specified in dot, 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 dot. Suggesting there are no other possible reasons for denial. That that may not be the case. Is that fair?
No, that is, that is not fair. If you are going to deny, your denial has to be based on their failure to address the applicable portions of the zoning resolution. There are no other options for denial.
So that would be chapter five, section F, one through three excluding two.
One through three, one through three, and then three includes A through H, which are incorporated verbatim from the zoning resolution in the findings necessary for approval in this staff report on pages two and three.
Okay, I see. I I was missing the fact that F one would be included in the in the wording here. Nope, good answer. Thank you. That that, uh, and then, uh, the fact that you've added the board accounting commissioners here. I I don't think that the staff report has to be identical for us in the board accounting commission. Am I correct there, right?
That was general language for David and Joe, depending upon which staff report they were preparing.
But but am I correct that there's no reason the staff can't provide a a more expansive or a condensed or whatever report to county commission? Those can be two different things.
They always make changes to their staff report, so the commissioners have the same options, though. Approve as it's stated in the staff report, which the staff report would change because it would then incorporate the findings from planning and zoning, or deny. And in other cases, there are options to add conditional uses when it's appropriate. But in the land use change section, there are not conditions.
Mr. Chair, may I address that as well?
Yes, you may, David. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so all I would add would be that we try to keep the staff reports, you know, very similar because obviously, um, these are the findings and this is the report that the planning and zoning worked off of, right? So the additions or deletions would be based on the discussion and the recommendation that the planning and zoning commission makes. So, you know, if the planning zoning commission decide, okay, well, you know, we don't feel like staff really address this and we think this about this specific thing, um, then we would add that to show that, okay, planning and zoning said this about this. Um, so we're going to keep the same format and the majority of the same things, but we want to include and incorporate what has been discussed by finding zoning commission. Because this isn't really staff's recommendation once it leaves the planning zoning commission. It's now planning zones recommendation. That makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's all I've got. And thank you for the opportunity to start that discussion. Uh, we will be coming back to this in subsequent months.
All right, very good. Um, we'll move on to the other updates on number seven that Mr. Hinkley had wanted to address and added to our agenda for today. So, Mr. Gerch, would you be happy to give us those updates?
First, the minute, the natural resource management plan. Um, we're, we're continuing to work through that. Um, we have a meeting this Thursday where we're going to go over chapter seven, I believe. It's a socioeconomic chapter. Um, be reviewing that. Um, I think within the next month and a half, two months, we should have the group will have went through the entire document once. Um, at that point, I believe, will that group will then review the the whole document. Um, and then I'm not sure exactly the timeline after that. There'll be some public meetings and and things that occur. Um, and then the planning zoning will receive that, um, here. Um, in the next three or four months, I'm guessing, um, to do their review of this plan. Um, and then hopefully we get to a point where we move it on to the board accounting commissioners. Um, so that's, that's kind of where that plan's at. Um, so it's moving through, it's nearing the kind of the. Um so it's moving through, it's nearing the kind of the end of the initial um drafting of it.
That that'll come to P and Z?
Yeah, before it it's going to be a plan, so therefore it'll be approved through um the basically the comprehensive plan statute. So it requires um you guys to review it, um do a public hearing, we do some notices. And then the board of county commissioners will be the the final say on on it and make a decision. But but yes, planning and zoning will be involved with this process, so. Any other questions on that plan? Good. Um next, the cap update. Um so we're we just we're in kind of the contract negotiation phase. There is just some wording um that need to be changed changed in the contract between um the county, the city and Stan Tech, who is the the consultant on that. Um they we we got all that approved. The board of county commissioners and city council approved that yesterday, I believe. Um and so they're getting signatures and it'll go to Stan Tech for signatures. Um and we're moving forward. Um I actually met with the group. Um that's kind of the oversight group for that project today. Um and we're in the process of kind of coming up with the game plan. We're starting to move forward. Um Santex in the collection of information phase, so we're getting them documentation and and information so they can start um the review of uh you know, plans, reports, um studies, all of those things that have to do with the CAS Bureau. For um and so so that's that's kind of where we're at with that. And then, I mean, any any questions on there? I mean, we're just we're just beginning. We kind of had our kickoff meeting today, so.
Oh, interesting.
So. And then the last plan um is the growth area plan. This one's a little bit behind the cat plan. Um we're in the RFP creation phase. Um so county and city staff are right now kind of diligently working through it to come up with a good RFP. Um it has went to the group, um that's the oversight group for that plan. Um we received some comments um from that group and those are being incorporated, I believe. Um and then, yeah, so by next week, we're hoping to have have another draft. Um and then I I would have to check with my city counterpart, um Derek, to see whether that's going back out to be looked at again um by the group or not before we publish it. But we are trying to get that published here as soon as possible. Um but but yeah, I think they're just right now and we're just in the phase of incorporating those and then get it into a form where it meets kind of county policy as well. Um so those are the changes that we're kind of looking at, the ones that were provided by the group as well as um the ones that we'll need to make just to follow form that's approved by the county. Um where we're the where the kind of organization that is overseeing this one. So any questions on that one? Okay, well, that's that's kind of the update. Um anything else do you guys want updated on? I I think those are the big projects we're working on right now, so.
It's a lot.
Ye- yes, it is. Agreed.
All right, thank you, David. Thank you for all that explanation in the um, you know, just updates on everything. Um we'll move on here to uh other items announcements. The next meeting um is scheduled for January twelfth, twenty twenty one. And as everybody's fully aware of, um this is my last meeting. This is also Mr. Spiegelberg's last meeting, being on P and Z. But I take I I think it's probably wise to uh set next month's meeting, uh January twelfth, twenty twenty one. And I had a request to move that from two o'clock to three o'clock. Uh David, do you see any issue with that?
Uh I don't I don't see an issue with that. Um I think that um we haven't noticed anything yet. Or we haven't sent out public notice, so I I think that would be be fine, so.
Okay, very good. So uh any comments from Mr. Kennedy or Mr. Hinkley on that change?
That's that's fine, fine with me. What what was the reason? Was it something?
Oh, uh just availability for the meeting.
Yeah, that that was me. I was going to be tied up until until uh three o'clock with another meeting that day. That for one of my clients, so I have no control over the schedule yet.
I know the drill. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and schedule next month's meeting, January twelfth, twenty twenty one at three P M. Just so everybody's aware of the meeting time for next month's meeting. I'll move on to citizen comments. Um if we have any non-agenda related topics, if there's a moment here where anybody from the public would like to comment or address the commission, this would be the time.
Uh I can I be a public?
Sure.
All right, I I would like to take the opportunity to to commend you, Chairman Moore, for your conscientious services, chair of the commission this past year. I I think you've done a great job of conducting our meetings in a fair and respectful way. We all bring different perspectives to the job and we all strike the balance between too much and too little exercise of the county's planning and zoning authority in different places. And and we probably strike that balance in different places in different issues and and that's fine. Uh but I think you have presented a a much needed example of how we can disagree on policy points in a polite and orderly manner, given different points of view and opportunity to present ourselves, to inform public policy decisions that ultimately come down to a vote of the commission. And all that is as it should be. So thank you, Sean, and Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Those are very kind words and I appreciate that. Um I guess I'd probably take this opportunity to this this moment to um say a few words. It was uh nine years ago that I got on the planning and zoning uh commission. And I would just like to thank um all the members that I have worked with over the last nine years. I think that having a position like this um is a testament a testament to um people in our community that care and uh want to take their personal time. And um there's been a lot of tough decisions and a lot of things I've struggled with. And and I know people can be upset and and stuff. But ultimately, I feel everybody who is on this planning commission does it because they care about Laramie, they care about Albany County. And um it ma- it makes it tough sometimes with with the public and and some decisions that maybe we didn't necessarily want to make, but uh kind of have to because of the law and 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 people's rights. But um with that being said, um everybody I think I served with, um I really appreciate them and and um, you know, uh just working with them and getting to know them. Um, Mr. Gerch, I want to thank you. Um I think that you uh do a fantastic job representing our county. And um everybody that uh has worked down there with you, like Susan Adler and and Chris Van Aken and and Joseph and Jenna, I mean, I think you guys uh do a wonderful job. And I'm proud that I'm a resident of Albany County and we have you guys working for our county. And uh you know, it's just been really nice to get to know all of you guys. So with that being said, um we'll move on to any other public comment.
We have a public comment here, so.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Hello, gentlemen. Some of you know me. My name is Ann Brand and I'm the executive director of the Albany County Conservancy. And it was nice to attend your meeting today. I've attended many planning meetings over the past two years. And um I particularly wanted to attend today after reading the newspaper summary listed on November fifteenth that identified Myra Hannings' concerns about cumulative impact in regards to industrialized development in Albany County in the Laramie Valley. I represent a nonprofit that's a grassroots coalition that over the past year has been able to raise a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our first year as a nonprofit to protect, preserve and promote wildlife habitat and history in the Laramie Valley. My supporters are extremely concerned and watching the planning board very closely. Many of them have requested a moratorium on wind for the past two years, and we all know how that's played out. Um there are cumulative impacts when industrialized sites lay next to one another. And so the conservancy will continue to note their concerns in their documentation in regards to development in the area. Um state what statements were made yesterday um from me to the commissioners. And as noted, the commissioners decided to take a forty-five day extension um in regards to the Rock Creek Three Wind Project by Invenergy. I have with me a gentleman who this is his first planning meeting. He will also be making public comment about his concerns. We decided that we would like to attend in person because he doesn't use Zoom. So it's nice that we have this format. I know that's been much of the frustration during COVID nineteen. For rural residents in particular, is that focus? And when we're talking about natural resource plans, whether um things like accepting the proposal from development and from the entities filling in the paperwork for the county are complete or incomplete. I'd like to note that the conservancy has hired internationally acclaimed acousticians in regards to sound regulations in the county. I know that we yesterday had an engineer geophysicist, geologist um note that the current sound study on Rock Creek, Rock Creek was done on flatland and that project does not sit on flatland and that it was um static, it was in one direction only. Um I did hear the Rock Creek representatives state that they have done a new sound plan. Um I'm sure that will be a further conversation. I just wanted to make you all aware of the conservancy's interests in the preservation, protection and promotion of the Laramie Valley.
Well, thank you, Ms. Brand. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Brand. Uh the gentleman want to address the commission?
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Uh Aldo Vassler, fifteen fifty-six North Fifteenth Street here in Laramie. And uh apologize not being able to do the Zoom thing and the book face and all that. I'm a little digital ignorant, so I need to be, I need to see face to face and personal talking. So I'm just alignment, but I am a resident of Laramie. I entered electrical field in nineteen eighty after start serving in the United States Army, forming at Florida Power and Light. Fellow position of line foreman here in Wyoming, left the industry in two thousand seventeen. For my personal, just my personal opposite observations on bird strikes, kills, collisions and impacts. It's not out of the ordinary to see multiple birds. At any one of the uh, any one of the individual terms, crows, blackbirds, magpies, hawks, golden eagles. I uh, in my thirty-seven years of working in the uh electrical industry with the major uh large electrical companies, I was bound by um letters of agreement and things that I signed that I cannot and would not disclose. Fear of retribution, the discipline up to including uh a termination. Uh I'm no longer in that, so I can speak freely about what I've seen. And actually, what I've done and I've witnessed others do. I'll just say this, this uh at this time, I'd rather not have my tax dollars subsidizing these uh animal food processors. And I appreciate Charles' time.
Thank you, sir. Um any comments from the commission? Anybody want to address anything, Mr. Hinkley?
Yeah, I wonder maybe David could could remind us, where are we with the update of the wind rags? Because that's also out there, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. So um the wind rags are the Environmental Advisory Committee created a committee, a subcommittee of that committee to review our regulations um and to provide some updates um to those. Um so they've um they've done their research and reached out to some folks, um getting together some of their recommendations. Um I believe that at some point, they'll be meeting with me to kind of go through those things. Uh but but I haven't seen them yet, but um as far as I know, everything's kind of moving forward. I don't know what exactly they're proposing or uh you know, at this point, so.
But over the course of this year or months, or do we have any sense of when we will see that at P and Z?
I I have no clue, honestly. Um the EAC meets every two months. Um so they just met here in December. Um so the they it would have to be approved by the EAC board before it's recommended to us. Um so I'm not sure exactly when that is supposed to to happen. I would I would say that, I I mean, it sounds like they're getting close to what they're they're wanting to put together. So um in on their February meeting, it could be approved at that point. And then then at that point, I would get it on the agenda for you guys to review. So um it would probably be like the March meeting at the the earliest. Um but i- if if that's if they get their their, you know, draft together that they want to present to us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Mr. Kennedy?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brand, for your comments. I appreciate them. Um anybody else from the comp uh public like to speak? Now is your time. And seeing that there's nobody else on the participants list than us. And Mr. Gerch, do you have anybody else down at your office that'd like to speak?
I do have one question for all of you. So how many of you then go back and view the YouTube of the commissioner meeting?
I I watched the meeting. What's your?
Anybody else?
Ms. Brand, um Mr. Hinkley's been involved over the years. I've been on this commission for nine years and I've been involved in many meetings. Which meeting are you talking about specifically? Are you talking about yesterday's?
Yesterday's. I just don't understand if it's standard process for most of you in in your um activities in regards to serving on the planning or whether you review the commissioner meetings since they're run separately from your own.
Well, I can't speak for the other members of the commission and other members of the commission that I've served with in the past. But we're very um, we understand, we we know what they do. Does that mean we go to every meeting? No. Do we follow what their decisions are and their recommendations are? Absolutely. I know I do. Um I can't speak for the other members, but I would I would have to say the commission you have in front of you today, Mr. Hinkley's very involved, Mr. Kennedy's very involved, and so have I. So absolutely, yeah.
I then to answer that a little bit more, I don't routinely go through their YouTube. I enjoy enough of that of the state legislature, uh but I do pretty routinely review their minutes as soon as they're published. And that that's the way I prefer to keep up because I can actually go through those quite a bit quicker than I can watch a meeting that may go on for several hours and and have many routine items in it as well.
When do they give you the minutes?
I usually check them just oh within a week before we meet to see what they've done within the last month.
Yeah, I I think they actually will, their minutes will, they write the minutes, but then they get them approved at the next meeting. And then they'll be posted right after that. That's usually a two week or so turnaround turn.
Yeah.
I would strongly encourage you to engage with the last meeting since they have taken the forty-five day extension and that places it at January twentieth.
Well, thank you, Ms. Brand. We'll uh take that for consideration. And with no more public comment, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion?
Your turn, Byrne.
Okay, so moved. We're a team.
Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Hinckley?
I.
Mr. Kennedy?
I.
And Chairman Moore, myself, I. Everybody have a Merry Christmas and, and be safe and take care.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thanks for letting me come in, guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime. Yeah, I think at some point we'll be back in the in-person meetings, I hope so. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll have a couple of new planning zoning commissioners and they might want to just start moving back to their house, so.
Well, yeah. Visual stuff and all this thing is really hard for just a dumbass lineman.
No, no.
Nobody needs to apologize to me. I, I, I'm a challenge monotasker.
I happen to watch him try to get all of you on, so I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see you.